Good evening and welcome to the Eagle County School District Board of Education Meeting, October 22nd, 2025. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And thank you to the principals who joined us this afternoon and gave their school improvement plan presentations, Avon Elementary, Red Sandstone, Edwards Elementary, and the Early Learning Center. And also to Mr. Beaver for another fantastic budget work session. I think we're going to start tonight's meeting with the consent agenda. This is... Would anyone else like to be leading this meeting? No? Okay. This is a way for us to approve items of a more routine nature. It is an action item, and any item may be removed and considered separately. It looks like on the consent agenda for the next meeting, whenever that may be, we have approval of the minutes of September 24th, approval of the personnel list, approval of the IDEA narrative. Sorry, these are items for tonight, not for next meeting. What else? And we got some monitoring reports. So again, any item may be removed or considered separately. Otherwise, this is an action item.
Just a question on the IDEA, one that they... form that was in there. Was everything filled out in there? I know it was like 10 pages or 11 pages long. The first couple pages didn't seem as though there was any information in there. But the last couple had stuff written down of...
So we'll make sure that we have...
Just want to make sure it's a complete form.
Action item?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second? Thank you, Lou. Thank you, Juan. Natalia?
Ms. Conlon?
Aye.
Ms. Hovey?
Aye.
Mr. McQueeney?
Aye.
Mr. Penya?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Tivarcunis?
Aye.
Super motion passes 6-0. Next on the agenda, we have the report of Superintendent Qualman.
Thank you, Mr. President. We'll get the presentation up here on the board to guide my conversation. Jump to slide two. All right, we have a few celebrations to start out with here. I wanted to acknowledge our technology department, recipient of a recent exciting national award, and I would probably not do it justice. So I've asked Jack Donley, Chief Technology Officer, to explain a little bit more about the icon award. Jack?
Thank you, Phil. It's a global award, and it's sponsored by an organization called On Conference or the On Con Awards. They do advocacy and they run events for many different verticals within companies, right? So there's an HR, CFO, you know, this kind of thing. And so they solicited... What they do is they solicit nominations, and others will nominate. We went through that process. Because of some of the work we did earlier in the year and data put together for the DAC presentation, I just sent in the information. And then they vet the nominations and figure out who's going to go forward in the process, which we made the cut. And then they do, you know, more extensive review. They judge teams based on considerable impact to their organization, strong contributions to their job function, community throughout... through thought leadership, and then innovation in their projects. So we wound up getting... The award is for being in the top 100. So we won that award for both the technology team category as well as the information security category, so two of them.
Outstanding, Jack. Thanks for sharing that. Jack has done an incredible amount of work in the short time he's been with us in a couple of years. Really brought our technology department up in terms of our security to the industry standard. His ed tech team deeply ingrained in what our students are doing on the forefront of how we incorporate AI into our classrooms. Brought a lot of redundancy to our networking and saved us some money along the process in all of that work. Tremendous amount of work in a short time. So thank you. Well deserved for you and your team. So good job to the tech team. Some of your predecessors, when their names were mentioned, it was uttered under the breath, usually followed by curse words. It's changing here with you. So thank you. Thank you. Appreciate that. Other celebrations. I've had a few more celebrations with some schools that met their school performance framework targets. Just yesterday, celebrated with VSSA, did the rare Tuesday afternoon club, and got to celebrate that at an establishment where the bartender was Wade Hill. Wade Hill, yeah, former principal of VSSA, who was the principal in charge of the year where they met that growth. So very fun to have the party there with him at the bar and celebrate with him. So a couple more on the horizon. So looking forward to wrapping those up and celebrating with those schools that had tremendous success this year. This Thursday, tomorrow, we'll be celebrating kitchen staff for their hard work. Appreciate everything that they do every day to put nutritious meals in front of all of our kids twice a day and snacks as well. So we need to honor them for their hard work, and I'm happy to do that tomorrow. Last celebration, I want to thank Mr. Reynolds. Dan, thank you for your four years of service as board president. I tell you that you've earned every penny of the considerable stipend that we do not provide. Your family's here to acknowledge your hard work, and you're going to get him back on Wednesday night. So I don't know if you're happy about that, or should I apologize? We're going to miss him, I can tell you that. Dan, I think what I've appreciated about your leadership is you have an interesting way to balance keeping us on track, sticking with business, and focused on what's best for kids in terms of academics and achievement, while also bringing some levity and some humor and not letting us take ourselves too seriously, even though it's extremely important work. You also were pivotal in helping us revise all of our policy governance, which is not a fun task, but pushed us and led us through that whole process. And those new policies will last for many years to come. So you left a solid legacy from your seat. Happy that you are a winner of the McGuffey Award.
Actually...
Oh, here we go. I said it. I said it. I'm sorry. Here we go. There it is.
Yes, I did.
The McGuffey Award for outstanding board service.
Everybody.
So Dan, thank you for your service. You will be missed. I know you can always come back any Wednesday and hang out with us.
Thank you, Phil.
All right. Updates. All right. Maybe this one should have gone on celebrations, but we added chicken and waffles to the menu, and that has been quite well received. So that's a big deal for our students and our schools. So we're excited to offer a new menu item. Also, this community gets pretty excited about snow. We do have snow in the forecast. I've been talking to principals about what that means, making sure they have their two-hour delay schedules designed and distributed to their students and their staff, making sure they got all the shovels strategically placed. I see Coach Cope in the audience, so I got to make sure that there aren't all of the snow shovels in the Edwards area collected at the soccer field. So we got to make sure that that's cleared. But we're excited for snow. I know the maintenance department has been prepping for this for weeks. All the equipment is dialed in and ready to go. I'm not saying all this so that people start to get excited about a snow day tomorrow or Friday, because let's just be honest, that's not happening. So calm down. But we're aware that snow's in the forecast, and we're excited. A couple of conferences coming up I want the board to be aware of. This Thursday, Friday, I'm going to be in Denver for the Rural Alliance Conference. These are all the school districts, about 130 of them, that are not in the urban Front Range corridor. And we're all part of this alliance. I'll be presenting at that conference in the next couple of days. And then I'll be heading down to the Case Principal Conference a couple of weeks after that to present down there as well. So happy to continue to help my colleagues around the state improve their practice. That's it for me, Mr. President. Back to you.
Thank you, Superintendent Qualman. Next up, our board reports. Harry, would you start us off?
Sure. So in our time since the last meeting, I was able to get out to Gypsum Middle School. You know, Dave was right, trying to get in that building is a little bit of a maze, but it is much safer now, so that's great. It was fun to see some of the teachers. We heard from the principals today of some of teachers moving around and getting different positions in the valley. Two teachers that I had as kindergarten teachers back at Red Sandstone were teaming up over at Gypsum and working together at middle school. So, and they were having a great time at it. So it's good that our valley can support our teachers and let them move up and down and let them work at different environments and continue to work for us. So that was a lot of fun to see, and they were really happy about it. Other than that, it's just getting ready for winter. Make sure you blow out your sprinkling systems and do all your yard work. That's what I was doing today. So much fun. So.
Thank you, Juan. Those are real roses.
Those are real roses. Lilia and I went and helped Habitat for Humanity during Women's Building Day, and we learned how to install doors. Wow, that's, yeah, something else. But, yeah, it was fun. And with that, I will just say, Dan, I cannot believe you're leaving us. What are we supposed to do without our dose of stand-up comedy every Wednesday? Harry and Juan, you're going to have to do it for him. And then I want to say three things I will miss about Dan. The board meetings, in-house entertainment, of course, the bad mustache, even though he says Amy likes it. Is that true? I knew he was lying. But mostly the good energy, jokes, and free legal protection. And with that, I want to wish you the best as a future girls' basketball coach. Yes, we're still waiting on that team, right? Did you find a team as a basketball coach?
Yeah, I... Starting tomorrow. There's, yeah. There's an...
Already?
Yeah. Well, the season starts in November, but, yeah, my duties start tomorrow.
Well, congratulations, Dan. And you will be missed, for sure. Thanks for everything you've done for the district.
Just talk about me, Juan.
Well, you know, I met this guy four years ago. Kind of a different breed. So, first time I met Dan, we were actually at a... We're doing a conference, and it was... It was, we're running for the board. And I'll be honest, I was nervous as heck. They said Vail Daily's there and is at Homestake Peak School. And I said, "We're in the auditorium, and they're going to put us on stage, and they're going to ask us a bunch of questions." And so I was a little bit younger, about 48, and probably shaking at the knees, looking at everybody out there, and they started asking questions. And they asked a question to Dan. And then they asked the same question to Dan. And then finally, they said, "Dan, we're talking to you." "Oh, you're talking to me?" And I knew it was going to be fun after that. Totally broke me from the nervous that I had. Honestly, you know, it's been great and got me to make a great friend. It definitely does bring the fun to the party. When we first started, they said they had to separate us, and they put me right next to them anyway. So it's all good. So thank you.
Thanks, Juan. Gretchen?
All right. Well, I won't read my long board report. I'll just talk about Dan. Dan, I would not be here today if it weren't for you, truly. Wendy Rymel had reached out to me to take Michelle's position on the board a year and a half ago, and I texted Dan immediately. And I, you know, wrote him like a paragraph of a text message, and he writes back in all caps, "Just do it!" exclamation point. And I followed his advice, and here I am. And I'm so grateful I did. I respect you so much, and I really appreciate having had the last year and a half to learn from you. And, you know, you taught me how to say pursuant properly, and I just am forever grateful. I'll miss you.
Thanks, Gret. Lilia?
Thanks, Dan. I'm going to take this whole time to talk about Dan, nothing else. From the moment Dan mic dropped at the Casby Annual Conference, I knew he would make a fantastic board president. Thank you for your commitment to the board, never missing a single meeting while president. As vice president, I truly appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you for always reminding us to have fun along the way. Thanks for always being a thoughtful listener, and thanks for always looking out for the best interests of our students and our district and the community. I hope you know how much we'll miss you. It's been an honor to serve with you on the board for the past four years. Thank you.
Thanks, Lilia. And that's all I want to say is thank you. Thank you to my family. Thank you for the balloons. They're beautiful. But thank you for the opportunity to serve on this board. Thank you to everyone's hard work throughout the way, especially to the board members and to Superintendent Qualman. There's no one else that I'd rather work with. The ties, you guys look so good in your ties. I think, you know, we've done a lot of good in the last four years. We've had a lot of fun, but we've done a lot of good. We may not have agreed on everything every time, but we're one big team, and you will continue to be one big team with one big goal, to provide our students with the best education possible and equip them to succeed in all their endeavors. And Rachel, you're going to have so much fun. Thank you for doing this. You're going to love it. So keep it going, keep having fun. I'll miss these memories. I'll especially miss Shelley's Head Start, early childhood education presentations, and Mr. Beaver's budget work sessions. But maybe I will come back for some of those. So thank you. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve on the board. Do I leave now? I feel like I should leave now. All right. Thank you, and let's move on to public participation. It looks like we do have a couple of blue cards, maybe even more. Are there any other blue cards in the audience? All right, so as a reminder, each person that comes up has three minutes. There is a timer that you'll be able to see when you get to the lectern. Just push that little person icon, and the red light will turn on, and then Austin will be able to hear you. Secretary Tivarcunis will call your name, and I think that's all I've got. Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you, Dan. First, we have Debbie. Michelle?
It's my wife. I'm Robert Good, the next one.
Okay, so Robert, perfect.
So that... Yes, that, yeah. Do you want three minutes? Is that what you're looking for?
And my wife's too. I'm probably thinking a little more...
Right. So that's... We... There is a policy that where you can't add times, add another person's time. If she's here, that's great, she can speak, but if not, your time is three minutes.
Okay, we'll see. Just go really fast.
Thanks.
Is that there? Robert Good, 970, Sylvan Lake Road. For the second year in a row, I was a coach for the Eagle Valley High School, and two years in a row, and I have been paid, according to the experience. Last year, they fixed it. This year, $2,500 short. Basically, Ryan Lynch, the athletic director, and Corinne, after about seven out-of-office replies, they said, "Too bad. That it's been approved, that's the way it goes." So last year, it was they fixed it, and they went through, they gave me the whole, you know, schedule of how it works. So I just was wondering what... If you're not following the normal criteria, what criteria is being used? I was wondering, like, a couple of weeks ago, there was a big meeting here, somebody wished that President Trump was dead. I was wondering if their salary was docked at all? When we sent the kids to the... We sent them to that drag show, I was wondering, did they dock anybody's 50% of their salary or a third of their salary? Do you guys know that there was an alleged rape on the Battle Mountain basketball bus? Two coaches were on the bus. I was wondering if their salary was docked. I'm not sure how this works. We got a brand-new football field up there at Battle Mountain, no football team. The athletic director, any financial responsibility for that in their pay for not, you know, rallying a football team? Yeah, I don't know. We got a murder, you know? I don't know how much inviting we did to people in our school, but... So we got a murder over here. We got enrollment way, way, way down next year. Are we taking any financial responsibility for that? Test scores, you know? So I don't know. Just a quick check on how we're doing things. We're moving into the next phase, you know, we're going to get a new superintendent. If you told me you were paying somebody $400,000 a year, and you had rape and murder and corruption and drag shows, I'd say you do the opposite of that moving forward. So the one that you have selected for next, I don't know if it's going to be the opposite or not, but I think that's probably a good direction to move, not just more of the status quo. Remember, we got murder, we got rape, we got kids going to a drag show with no permission slips. We had a coach coach all last year, his paperwork wasn't filled out by Ryan Lynch. I mean, it's a lot of stuff, guys. This is a small town. This is Eagle County, Colorado. What is going on? You guys got to do... You got to grow stones here. You got to do what's right. I, you know, I donated $2,000 to the wrestling room on my own. I don't really care about the money, but I do care about the principle about some guy just... People just, you know, circumventing policy and doing whatever they feel like doing. I don't get it. So, yeah, I don't know. Is that it? There we go. Got her done. Thanks.
Okay, next, we have David Cope.
I have to press a button? Is that... Oh, it's already on, okay. I brought a prop for the nail for you. Mike, good evening. Thanks for your service and working on behalf of all the kids in Eagle County. It's truly noble what you guys do, especially those of you that are volunteering. And Dan, welcome to the Battle Mountain Athletic Department. Downward mobility is a thing. The best thing about basketball is there's timeouts. So if it gets a little, you can call a timeout. I'm the head boys' soccer coach at Battle Mountain High School, and I'm a former teacher there. And I have a concern about the supplemental pay matrix for the district. It tops out after a certain number of years, and I guess my only question is why? Maybe we never thought somebody would live this long, and so here I am. So if you could look into that. And then my next concern is about the track and turf replacement at Battle Mountain that went on this summer, fall, and possibly winter. This is the most visible facility in our district with its mid-valley location and proximity to the highway. We haven't been putting on a great show for the public with sheets of plastic blowing in the wind, long breaks in the work schedule, and construction equipment scattered around. It raises concerns about our ability to manage facilities and construction projects. Battle Mountain Soccer, we run an informal free program for our players in the summer, and we invite students from other schools to come as well. And this summer, we moved that program to the practice field next to the school because we were assured that the work was going to be completed in time for the start of preseason. And we were grateful to have that new facility and that new practice field with turf on it. The project seemed to take a big hiatus in July, and when there was nobody working on it for weeks. We were there every night and witnessed this, along with the football players. Community members often ask me, like, "What's going on with the field?" At one point, we were assured that August 5th would be the completion date, but that one came and went. Our preseason began on August 11th, and we practiced at HPS, Freedom Park, and the practice field next to the school. But we're assured, "Don't worry, the project will be completed in time for our home scrimmage, which was August 16th." That date came and went, and we played elsewhere. Over the next few weeks, we had sporadic access to the field and played some home games there while practicing in various other locations. On September 16th, we were assured that the track would be completed in just a few days, but that date came and went, and we moved our home game to Vail Mountain School. It's now October 22nd, and we've been asked to move our final regular season home game against the number-one team in 4A to Freedom Park because the program is going to be finished in, you guessed it, just a few days. I know that these are first-world problems, and that we're extremely fortunate to have these facilities and backup facilities available, and that this is a one-off summer. However, kids only get one senior year, and this has been unfair to our players. Considering that the job should have been completed in June, July, and August, I traveled to fields all over the state and have never seen a field renovation or a track replacement done in September and October. It just seems crazy. I have a couple of concerns, but my time's up, so I don't mind stopping if that's it. I just had a couple of things.
Can you send us an email or reach out to the board?
Yeah, and I could just leave you with this document. Yeah. Okay. Hey, thanks very much, everybody.
Thanks, Coach. Luke Reynolds, it is your time to shine. Just all you got to do is walk up to the podium there, and the light's already on for you. All your friends will see you on TV. Hmm? No. Okay. All right, let's move on to new and old business. You guys don't have to stay for this if you don't want to. Yep. New and old business. This is an opportunity for input on work session and agenda items for the November 12th, 2025, board meeting. Looks like you've got an executive session with some superintendent goals, a work session, additional Casby conference planning, I believe our final student school improvement plan presentations in regular session, monitoring reports, and then some exciting business and operation items with your final October count update, approval of a financial report, approval of quarterly reports, and state auditor's fiscal health analysis. How's that sound? Are there any other items that board members would like to add to the upcoming November 12th agenda?
I was wondering, did you want to address the field that we were just talking about? Because I know that I'd seen it, and they... I seen it at Eagle Valley where it was laid out, and I got my explanation, but you didn't. Like, it was laid out, and then they pulled everything off, and they put it, redid it a couple of times, you know? So probably same thing happened at Battle Mountain, but I wonder if you could address that.
Yeah, I don't need to wait until the next meeting.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. So...
Thanks, Juan. Anyone else?
Juan, I think the supplemental pay topping out. I guess I don't know anything about it. Maybe just in your email, conclude a little blurb about that. Thanks.
And I hope they're aware that Battle Mountain does have a JV team, football team, and they did have a senior night. So from what we heard, that they didn't have a football team was misinformation.
True. We could spend most of the evening correcting that misinformation. Yeah, but I don't think I will.
All right, back to business. And maybe just one thing on the meeting tonight. We have a housing master plan update from Mr. Beaver.
They didn't bring Shelley through last meeting?
She was here earlier. Yeah, she did say she was going to stick around, but then she had to leave. Okay, thanks, Bryson. All right. Let me see if I can get this to be full screen.
Maybe not. Natalia, do you know how to get this full screen? Do I click this? That was not it. Sorry, everyone. All right, we're just going to do it like this. All right, well, this is a timely presentation based on our earlier work session. So overview, this is a, this is a stocktake update on our strategic plan and one of our goals within the strategic plan revolves around our housing master plans and the goal is that the district would continually pursue affordable housing opportunities as defined by the employee housing master plan. So what is the employee housing master plan, you may ask? In 2020, there was an employee housing master plan established, which was a 10-year roadmap for the district's efforts to help guide the district's efforts towards employee housing. And so part of that, part of that plan kind of defines why district housing is important for our district. So district, affordable housing is extremely difficult in our county. I think we could, could all agree on that. So developing affordable housing is a huge benefit and helps us to better recruit and retain quality educators here and quality employees throughout our district. And I think we could all agree that having fully staffed schools create a better learning environment for our students. And so that's why the district's made considerable effort to invest in affordable housing. So the original goal from the housing plan would be that by 2030, the district create at least 120 housing opportunities for district employees with a third of those being at or below 80% of area median income, a third being at or below 140% of area median income, and then the remaining third, there was flexibility given to the district on pricing there. So let's see how we are doing. Progress made towards goals. So the good news is, is that we're doing very well towards our goal. We're only halfway through the 10-year period and as of September 30th, we've already created 79 housing opportunities for our employees. So we're at 65% of our goal, 50% of the way through the time period with the caveat that hopefully by the end of this winter, we'll have an additional 40 units coming online at Gypsum and then by next fall, another four units coming online at Timber Ridge. At that point, we'll be over our 100% goal as long as all of those things go to plan, which is terrific. You can see here kind of a inventory of our district housing. The majority are district owned, meaning we have full control. And then we do have 18 master leased units that are owned by other owners. The vast majority of our employee housing is located in Gypsum and Edwards, which will be where our two large district owned developments are located and we have some other units spread throughout other areas of the valley. And I knew one of you would ask how we're also doing on the affordability component. So I have some notes because I didn't put that in my original presentation. So 100% of our units are at or below the 140% threshold and then 75% of our units, more than the one-third, are at or below the 80% threshold. So currently at Miller Flats, all of our one and two bedrooms are priced exactly at the 80% threshold, which is really great. Our three bedrooms are priced at 90 to 100%, so they're a little bit more expensive. But overall, we're doing really well on making sure that our units are affordable. On Third Street? Well, those, those were sold, so those aren't, those aren't district owned. So all the, all the Habitat homes are deed restricted, so we sell those. Yeah, I guess you're right. Hypothetically, those were opportunities we created, so. So this year's goal would be to make progress on our Malloy Park development. So strategy one is we're in the middle of navigating regulatory processes to, to begin to complete the infrastructure there so that we can begin to build a development. It's been somewhat difficult getting everything approved, so continuing to work with our consultants on getting approvals from Town of Mentor and CDOT on that development. Strategy two and a goal by the end of this school year would be to update the housing master plan to reflect the successes that we've had and to look at going forward, what are the needs in the community? And then our, our third strategy would be by the end of next year in 2026, beginning to look at how we're going to fund potentially the Malloy Park development through a COP or another funding method. And just as a reminder, the Malloy Park development, our goal is to put 120 units there. There'll be a mix of district owned apartments and Habitat homes. Our current status is we are working through approvals with the Town of Mentor. We are working with CDOT on traffic studies to make sure that we don't need to put any improvements on Highway 24 and then doing additional ditch and water work in the area to make sure that the lots are, are buildable. This is just to kind of another, another way to quantify our trajectory and our progress on these goals. As you can see, as of the end of last school year, we're at 66% of our goal. And as I said, by the end of next school year, we'll be well over 100%. So we are much on pace in that regard. And then the only challenges have been, it's been complex and difficult regulatory approvals, working with different stakeholders for our development and our infrastructure. So we continue to work through those. We're confident that we will get those done, but it's just a kind of slow progress. And then resources needed is just that we will need funding to fully develop Malloy Park. And so we need to work through what the best methods are there. Any questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
I'm a little confused about the wording on, in one of the sentences in your goal slide at the beginning, it says that will create at least as many additional housing opportunities through partnerships, programs and linking employees to existing resources. So does that mean that we're building 120? And then we're also, there's another 120 somewhere that we're, that's already existing that we're connecting?
I think that that's reflected by the partnership with Habitat as part of that conversation. We've also done some other projects with Eagle County where we have created opportunities through master leasing. So I think the point of that bullet was to say that we'll build and offer as rentals these units at Miller Ranch, Miller Flats and at the Gypsum Early Learning Center, but there are plenty of other opportunities that we've tried to create for purchase with Habitat. And at the Malloy Park project, half of the units are going to be Habitat for purchase homes and then master leasing opportunities. So I think it's just to say that we're trying to diversify the opportunities and not just provide district owned rentals because that's not, not the goal for everybody.
Thanks.
Is, I do got another question, but like Lou was talking about the, the ones in Eagle, the 13th Street. Is there maybe something like, not now, but like in the, for next time, but just a suggestion, like a side note, this is what we've done with Habitat and include like the Red Hill and.
Sure, yeah, we could show the IK Bar Grace Avenue units.
Yeah, so this way we could put those in there and this is what we've done in the past, so it kind of makes this.
Yeah, for sure. Certainly.
There's been 30, 38 Habitat homes that we've partnered with through IK Bar, Grace Avenue, Third Street Eagle and the, the new 10 that we're about to break ground on in Gypsum. So that's, those are all for purchase opportunities, pretty exciting. So I think that, you know, to Bryson's point earlier, they're not district owned, but they are district employee occupied and owned. So we, through our, our donation of the land and partnership with Habitat, created those opportunities for employees. So yeah, I don't think we should discount that.
I think we should count that.
So we heard from the Housing Committee that is trying to get formed through Eagle County and Avon, how do you see us kind of participating in that? I know they like all the separate entities like ourselves that are doing all this housing work. So I'm just concerned that we don't lose sight of what we're looking for in addition to trying to help them too.
Yeah, I mean, I think that it's still kind of to be determined. Phil, you have, you have an opinion?
Yeah, I wasn't sure if you wanted that or if you wanted me to take that. You know, anytime we could see intergovernmental agreements and collaboration on these projects, it, it's, it's helpful to the community because you're generating more opportunity for more individuals that are in need. We've made tremendous progress as an organization, but it's isolated to our employees. So Harry, to your point, I, I think that, that we need to do both. I think that we have been much more efficient and much more productive operating on our own and, and, and through our partnerships with organizations like Habitat and, and just the county. And then dealing with all the municipalities that we've had to work with on our projects has been time consuming and, and challenging to say the least, but I think we've learned through that process and can be a resource to the county as we try to create a more collaborative effort. And I think the outgrowth of that conversation today will, will likely be some kind of a question to the community in the November 2026 election, possibly 2027, to say, as a community, are we willing to tackle this affordable housing problem? And if we're at the table for that conversation, then we might be part of the solution if there are tax dollars to invest in more housing projects. If we just stay focused on our own progress, we won't be a party to that, that broader solution. So I think we'll do both.
Okay. Thank you, guys.
Any other questions for Bryson? Thanks, Mr. Beaver. All right. Feedback, evaluation of the meeting.
Dan, you've done such a great job of all the meetings that I've attended so far in the past like two years that, you know, I don't know how we're going to be able to continue on without the McGuffey Award winner. And, you know, we, when you came in, you thought we were mocking you. We were really, you know, honoring you with wearing, you know, looking with nice outfits and ties and everything else. So good luck with your, your next endeavor.
Thanks, Harry. You do look great. Is that it?
Make sure to let us know when your team's playing. We'll come and cheer.
Okay. We're going to smoke Eagle Valley.
At a chance.
All right. Who, do I hand this over? Okay. Okay. Ready? Everybody ready?